Yeah. Yeah, so the.
Your lack of transparency, man.
Thanks, Paul.
Just covering everything up, just sweeping under the rug.
Yeah.
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, got the right one now?
Yep.
All right, we got the right one now, so. Okay. We got two attendees so far.
Going a little heavy with those animals, Tiffany, geez.
Yeah, that's a that's like Wild Kingdom behind her there, so.
As she turns off the camera, okay, see it.
Mm-hmm.
There's, they're everywhere. It's not just that wall, so it's.
There isn't a animal carcass-free surface in your house?
Um, no, not that I can tell from this point of view.
All right, so what do we got? How's it chief? Doing okay?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Hi, everyone.
Carrie. Hello, Carrie, how are you?
How are you? How's it going?
Good, how about with you? Susan, are you there?
I'm here, I'm here, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Sorry. I hate technology.
And Linda's connecting to audio right now. Hello, John.
Hey, everybody.
Linda, do we have you?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get my not that you have to see me, but I am here. I'm not sure what I do to get my face up. Hi, Lance.
Linda, are you on an iPhone?
Nope, I'm on my laptop.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, I could tell you how to do it on iPhone. There's like on the bottom, there's like a little camera for stop video or start video.
Yeah, I see share screen, but I clicked that and it didn't do anything.
Yeah, no, that's not.
Share your screen, you should have over bottom, all the way over to the left, you should have stop video or start video. Uh, it should have a red line.
Wait a minute.
There we go, okay.
Thank you, Bill.
And we got Shannon, how are you there?
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
And we got Fred.
Good evening.
David.
Dragged me off of my deck, I was having a nice cold shock top. I'd love to do that on city business.
Hello Vernon, how are you?
Well, we, we, we never knew what was in Alderman, uh, we never knew what was in Alderman Doherty's cup, so. I don't see any problem with that, Fred.
Thank you.
David, we got you.
Yeah, I can hear everybody, good doing.
Good. Jason.
How we doing, guys?
Good.
We're good.
Nice to sit outside.
It was a gorgeous day, I did a lot of yard work today.
Got lens, who else we got? Okay. Over on the right is everybody's in attendance. Okay. I have, uh, I have in the room with me here at 1:19, I have Steve Bernard in here with me.
Hi, Steve.
Hi.
Hi Barney.
Hi, Linda.
Len's got his stimulus check and spent another three or four hundred dollars on shirts and ties, he's looking extremely handsome.
You look good, Len.
Thank you, Linda, no comment, Fred.
I was noticing that, that bling on your wrist, Len's.
What? What was that?
I was noticing that, that bling that you had on your wrist, that's a big watch you have there, my friend.
It's not that big.
Okay.
Um, Len's has elevated the standard address in the building here, so it's a good thing.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
He has a no compete clause in his contract, too.
Oh, okay.
Okay, um, do you guys see any problem get get moving here? Uh, let's see, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, okay, we've got all the aldermen present, uh, we got the mayor present. Carrie, so I think we are good to go. At this time, it is 6:15, I will now open the public hearing, um, so I'll pass it off to community development, uh, Carrie Kerper.
Okay, um, I'm just gonna read the legal notice so it can be read into the record, then I'll explain why we're having this public hearing. So, legal notice, public hearing, March 23rd, 2021, 16, 6:15 PM. Location via Zoom public hearing link that can be found on the City of Olian Council's website. New York State Office of Community Renewal Grant Program. A second public hearing will be held on Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021, at 6:15 PM. Via Zoom to discuss the implementation of the HK Olian Hotel LLC project that received community development block funding from the New York State Office of Community Renewal Project Number 841 ED 930-19. The purpose of the hearing is to obtain citizens' views regarding any aspect of the program's implementation, including but not limited to any construction, financing, and employment opportunities resulting from the program. Sign language interpreters will be participating in the online meeting platform. Written comments are invited and will be accepted upon delivery to the Department of Community Development at 101 East Gate Street, Room 209, Olian, New York, 14760. Or via email to kkerper@cityholian.org. Len Marshall, City Clerk, Carrie Kerper, Program Coordinator. Um, as you may recall, it was a couple of years ago, our office had applied to the Office of Community Renewal under the Economic Development Program to help assist with the, um, purchase of furnishing, furnishings and fixtures for the HK Olian Hotel project on Buffalo Street. Uh, we closed on the loan, the OLDC is the sub-recipient. Um, we've completed reimbursement number one, we'll do reimbursement number two, um, after the hotel opens, which is scheduled for April 14th. And upon the completion of the meeting, the employment goals, which is 24 new permanent full-time jobs and 11 permanent part-time jobs.
Okay. Um, anything else you'd like to add, Carrie? Okay. Um, at this time, I will open the floor for comments, oh, before I do that, uh, is there any remarks from the, from the council members? Okay, seeing none, uh, so at this time, I will open the floor for comments. Uh, if you have a comment regarding this topic only, again, the topic dealing with, uh, the item that was just presented on the Community Renewal Grant Program, please raise your hand. There will be a regular public comment, uh, section during our regular meeting later in the evening. But, uh, this, at this time, this is a public hearing regarding the, uh, Community Renewal Grant Program. So I will ask one more time, uh, is there anyone who would like to speak? Anyone at all? Anyone like to speak on this grant? Okay, so at this time, um, I will call the public hearing closed. All right. Um, so, that went quicker than expected, and so I would ask everyone to bear with us as we have to wait until 6:30.
Carrie, I have a question, when can you, um, call in for reservations, is it after the 14th?
I believe it's the 14th, that's their, um, opening date.
Okay, Lily wants to go and stay overnight, so I have to make a reservation.
Yeah, the pool's finished.
Good.
I would do it.
I'll let you know how it goes.
Oh, good, yeah, no, that sounds fun.
Yes, she's eager.
If you go to their, uh, uh, online, uh, reservations, they may be taking, uh, reservations now, because they're having.
Have to check it out.
Yeah, they're having their soft, they're having their soft opening on the 14th, so.
Right, okay, I'll check it out and let you guys know.
I guess there'll be, um, like a larger opening and ribbon cutting a few months from now.
Mm-hmm.
And at the same time, uh, remember, we have not had the ribbon cutting yet on the, uh, Jack, is it Jack Murphy? Uh, Boulevard.
Boulevard.
So we're gonna try to schedule that the same time as the hotel, uh, has their grand opening.
Great. You know, um, Mayor, I have the pictures of before they started taking all the buildings down, and then after, um, they started taking them down and all the asbestos and everything, and it was just such a big difference. Um, just driving through there when everything was coming down and being cleaned up. And now to have the hotel there and the street there, it's just, we've come a long ways, it just takes time, you know?
Sure does.
And I'm eager to get inside. And so is Lily.
Be a nice addition to the city, having that hotel there, and it'll help out, uh, honor graduations, any, any larger venue, it's gonna help out, so.
And it's the perfect location.
Yeah, having an additional 95 rooms available, you know, that puts people in our community and.
Yep.
Well, let's, let's, let's hope that it's an added, uh, incentive, you know, for someone looking at the Dresser-Rand facility, too, um, you know, a potential business.
Yes.
Uh, might be looking for an expansion and to have the abundance of, uh, rooms, you know, for people as they transition, move here, whatever, right, I mean, that's definitely a big selling point.
True.
Can you hear me, Arkel? I just, I just got kicked off and had to re-sign back on.
Does this hotel have a conference room?
What's that, I'm sorry?
Does this hotel have a conference room?
Conference meeting? I believe it'll, uh, it'll support 60 people, the new.
Yeah, I read that.
Okay.
Now, I remember a couple of years when we did Gus Macor and people literally had to stay in Bradford because the, all the rooms were taken. That's great.
Everybody noticed that the scaffolding is down around the, uh, First Trust?
Yes, I was parked.
First National Building.
I was parked behind a truck that was loading it and I sat there for a few minutes. It looks great. Someone asked me if they were gonna power wash it, I said I'm, I'm assuming they will and clean the windows.
They're actually not gonna power wash it, um, ship will won't allow them, the State Historic Preservation Office.
Really?
Really.
Are they gonna be able to clean the windows?
Yes.
Okay.
They're allowed to do that, but they can't take any of the, um, the dirt or make it look, um, newer than what it is, believe it or not.
There's a lot of dirt on there.
Sure is.
Okay.
How do, how do other, uh, like monuments and things like that get away with that?
Probably because Parks wasn't funding it. So they got a big say in it.
That's interesting.
Yeah, it's with the urban renewal agencies money, out of the 700,000, 500,000 came from EPS funds. And, um, it's protection, environmental protection funding, so, um, I think that is how, um, we're unable to do that, and there's a covenant on the building for, um, 25 years.
Wow. So all the spiders and everything have to stay in place.
They have a home.
Okay. See, I'd be up there scrubbing it and power washing it and cleaning the windows and but I, I get it. It just looks great at night, driving by there with the lights on. Big difference.
Bob, you with us?
Yeah, Mayor.
Okay, good.
I guess I'm back now.
We see ya.
I was wondering if you guys could hear me or not, okay, I think I'm all set. That was weird. I got booted out, and then once I got out, then it said I didn't have internet, it's like, what's going on here?
Now, David, you got booted out too, right?
Yeah, I did.
But good to have you guys back.
I'm trying to print the agenda, but it won't let me, maybe Tiffany can give me a favor and print it for me next week.
Yeah, we'd be happy to, uh, hard copy anything that you'd like and put it in your boxes, so.
I just, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I just got kicked off and re-signed back in, and now I, I don't see my picture, so we might have to go like this. I don't know what's going on.
Corner where the video is.
I don't know what's going on tonight, second time.
Look, look over in the lower left-hand corner, there you go.
There we go.
Your puppy's not chewing on the cords, are they?
No, it's probably that upgrade from Spectrum, they charged me 50 bucks more for this, and it's, I'm having problems.
Okay, uh, well, we are, we are here, and I think everyone is present, so at this time, there's no objections, I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole for Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021. Let the record show that all aldermen are present. Um, so first on our agenda, we have PL 10-21 by Mayor Elio to authorize the mayor to sign agreements between the City of Olian and the State of New York in connection with the consolidation, uh, consolidated section 5311 program funds and the accelerated transit capital funds for the purchase of three Lot K buses for the Olian Area Transit System, AKA Oats, and to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement, uh, with Matthews Bus Alliance, uh, DBA Matthews Bus Commercial. Uh, Mayor Elio.
Yes, I'm gonna have, uh, Carrie, uh, speak about this.
Um, in connection with the oats, we currently have five buses in our fleets, um, we're assigned Lot K buses by New York State DOT. We buy them off of the state contract, um, the vendor that's mentioned is the Matthews Bus Commercial, who we would be purchasing the buses from, um, they actually build the buses and then deliver them. Um, the buses are fully funded, we're short a bus in our fleet, we have two getting ready to reach their useful life. So this would give us, um, an entire, um, fleet so that there's, um, no other issues in case a bus, a bus breaks down. We take them off the road at each one, once a month to do the monthly DOT inspection, so this would alleviate, um, any overages. And each bus is approximately 148,000. Um, normally there's, it's an 80, 10-10 share, 80 federal, 10 state, 10 local. Um, we have a, I was able to secure 80 federal, 10s are in 20 states, so they're completely fully funded, so it's not gonna cost the city or its partners any money or with having to take anything from the reserve.
Okay, Carrie, thank you, um, a quick question, so does this mean, uh, old, older buses are gonna be retired?
Yeah, yeah, there's, uh, DOT guidelines, I have to take them to auction and depending upon, um, the amount received per bus, um, if it's 5,000 or more, um, I have to put it back into operating costs. If it's less than 5,000, then I can put it in the reserve and use it as that 10% capital match in the future. Um, generally, we only, um, get a few hundred dollars for a bus, believe it or not, once it's done.
Okay, all right.
And I would work with, uh, DPW on that, I work with the city garage in order, um, to take them to auction.
All right, very good, thank you, uh, are there any comments or questions by the council? Okay, uh, seeing nothing, um, this is PL, would anyone like to sponsor it?
Sponsor.
Uh, motion is made by Alderman Witt, gonna be second, second by Alderman Gonzalez, all in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Motion is moved and will be on tonight's regular meeting for resolution. Um, PL 12-21 by Mayor Elio to adopt and implement the City of Olian Police Reform and Reinvention collab, collaborative plan. Um, so, I'll turn it over to Mayor Elio.
Thank you, John, first off, I want to thank the, uh, the Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative Committee, uh, for their hard work. We met, we had 14 meetings, uh, to discuss this plan, uh, ranging from December 3rd all the way through, uh, March of this year. Uh, bef, uh, I have, I'm gonna make some comments that I did send out to you just a little bit ago, but I wanna, uh, on the plan, because I want you to have an understanding. Uh, and, and these are my comments, so, uh, if you go on page two to roll social worker, uh, the committee recommended that the common council consider a shared service agreement with Cataragus County to have a social worker available for the department when necessary on certain types of calls such as mental health and homelessness. Uh, my comments are during the meetings, a discussion, during our meeting's discussion was held with Mary Alary, Cataragus County Social Service Director. There is a, there, there is an on-call worker who is available, but the committee felt that we should still explore a shared service agreement with Cataragus County to enhance the coverage to better serve our community. So, uh, the second one is the role of the, the, uh, school resource officer. The committee recommended that the role of the school resource officer be defined and be an integral part of the community policing program. And we're gonna have another comment on community policing down below in a minute here. The committee supports a second school resource, uh, officer and rec. The committee supports a second School Resource Officer and recommends that the city investigate that option with the city's school district. Comment is, as of right now, we have one SRO position, and there's a shared cost with the school district. We also have two special patrol officers who serve as security officers for the two elementary schools. The payroll cost of the SPOs is fully supported by the school district. Recruitment. The committee recommended that the common council explore property tax incentives for officers living in Ole Miss and sponsor programs to the police academy. The committee supports the work of the Equity and Inclusion Committee in regards to recruitment. So that's the, my comments are, the committee thought that incentives would help in recruiting the best candidates for the police department. The committee felt that we should look into ways to sponsor candidates who would like to attend the police academy. We would still have to follow civil service guidelines. The committee also would like us to look into mentoring programs, which could help with future recruitment. Accreditation for the police department. The committee recommends that the department pursue and maintain accreditation through the Department of Criminal Justice Services. It was stated that many functions of the police department would be monitored in order to maintain the accreditation status. My comments are, this will be a lengthy process, which will be monitored by this Division of Criminal Justice Services. This will require many man-hours, and once granted, will require additional funds for training requirements. This is a very good thing, and this could, you're gonna see another comment under training that come up in a few minutes. Reestablish community policing. The committee recommends that the community policing program be reestablished. The School Resource Officer would be part of the community policing initiative. The committee recommends that the public be made better aware of community involvement with the police department, such as shop with a cop, child safety seat awareness, and others. The committee also recommended that the city research and possibly introduce an explorers program probable for ages six through 20, as well as a civilians academy for residents. It'd be a civilian police academy. In conversations with Chief Richardson, the police department is doing some community policing, but we can, we can get a much, we can get much better at it. This will require additional funding to institute the explorers program and the civilian police academy. Initiate a civilian review board. The committee recommends that the creation of a civilian review board be further explored and desires to work together to bring forth their recommendations at a common council. My comments are a few questions. Does, number one, does the community want a police review board? After public comment and other community correspondence, correspondence, the general consensus is that the review board is needed. Number two, how will the board be formed? What will their duties be? What authority will they have? How will the collective bargaining agreement come into play with a review board? Also, Taylor Law Civil Service Law Public Employees Relation Board, commonly known as PERB. These are just a few questions that have come up during the committee's discussions on police review board. So training of police officers. The committee recommends that police officers continue to receive defensive tactic training and cultural awareness programs be initiated. Accreditation will address many of the training needs. The police department is currently training the officers in cultural awareness and defensive tactics. Chokeholds, choke and neckholds. The committee was pleased that the Ole Miss Police Department was proactive and had banned chokeholds prior to passing of the Eric Garner Anti-Choke Act. The committee recommends that the policy be updated to ensure that the definition of chokeholds include both the obstruction of airway to the lungs and the end of blood circulation to the brain. These are now New York State laws that deal, there are now New York State laws that deal with chokeholds, and the department's policy has been updated. Physical fitness. The committee recommends that physical fitness programs and testing for police officers be initiated. Physical fitness requirements are established by civil service and the Division of Criminal Justice Services. Officer stress. The committee is well aware that stresses on police officers are overwhelming, especially in the current environment, and that this atmosphere has a negative effect on morale, which is low. The committee thus recommends that confidential programs and help for the officers be provided by the city. In addition, the committee suggests that police officers who go above and beyond be honored publicly. My comments are, the department does provide crisis counseling through our employee assistance program. Staffing. The committee supports the recommendation of police departments practice to limiting consecutive shifts. This is kind of self-explanatory. I really don't have a lot of comments, but what was going on here is working back-to-back shifts was deemed to be unhealthy for the officers, and during the conversations, and we found out that that is very seldom ever the case, unless it's an absolute emergency. Chief Richardson, that officers may be held over, but no more for four hours. So it takes away that working two consecutive shifts. Website. The committee supports the upgrades to the city website as recommended by the Equity and Inclusion Committee. So I have no additional comments on that one. That is something that is being worked on, and it would be brought up probably next week at the budget meetings. So, so thank you all for taking the time to let me go over my comments, and thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. I'll open it up to any comments or questions from the aldermen. Okay.
John, the only comment I might have is, and I received a couple of phone calls from my constituents also, is I don't know if I'm in favor of offering tax incentives for police officers or any city employee as far as that goes. So this resolution, when we pass it tonight, I mean, it's, it goes to New York State that says that we had these committee meetings, and that we come up with some sort of a plan, but by passing this tonight, we are not authorized in taxes up to police officers, are we?
No, no, Alderman Anastasia. Thanks for the question, and that really goes to really everything that the mayor just read and in the presentation. So the Police Reform and Reinvention Committee, as tasked by the governor's office, they were to look at, obviously, a wide variety of policies and procedures within our police department, and then they are providing us with recommendations. So being that we are the legislative body, we will pass the recommendations, so the mayor can send this to the governor's office in response to their Reform Act. But as far as the individual things that have been listed, those are going to be certainly things that we will have to consider and possibly enact or move on. So this is kind of just the beginning, honestly. Is that, is that right, Bill?
Yes, everything is a recommendation, and anything that is made permanent will have to be actioned by the council.
So, thank you for bringing that up, Dave.
Yeah, a concern that I had from a few constituents, and when they were talking about OT issues and two shifts and so forth, I'm sure those are all contractual bargaining agreements in the contract already, so we'd have to be kind of careful what we do and look at the contract before we'd agree to anything.
Okay, sure. Any other comments or questions? Well, I would like to say thank you, really, to, I know it was a large committee, about 20 members plus. They gave up their evenings and their time, really, for the betterment of the City of Ole Miss, and they've come up with certainly a long and meaningful list of considerations that we'll have to look at and certainly discuss and talk about a strategy going forward. So anything before we, I will, I will entertain a motion on PL 12-21 to approve the plan, so we can send it to the governor's office.
Don't move.
Motion is made by Alderman Gonzalez.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, of course. How about, how about Alderman Robinson for all the, all the time and effort that he put into it? So we've got a second by Alderman Robinson, and thank you, Vernon, for being our representative on that, on that committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion is carried, and it is moved.
Sorry, John. Hold on, hold on one second. Who was the first?
Paul.
Paul, thank you.
And then Alderman Robinson.
Got it, thanks.
All right, so that'll be referred to tonight's regular meeting for resolution. So next, we have a PL 14-21 by Mayor Elio to establish this standard workdays pursuant to New York State and the local retirement system regulation 315. Dot four. So this is something that's kind of standard. Mayor, would you like to speak on this?
Yeah, if you recall, we did one of these back here a few, a few weeks ago. Well, it came back from the retirement system, said that we didn't code things properly, so it has, it had to be done again. So we wanted to make sure that we had a resolution that had the proper, it also authorized the proper information here that has to go back into the state.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. Any comments or questions on this? I'll make a motion to approve. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Alderman Witt. All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. All right, motion is carried, and that is referred to tonight's regular meeting for resolution. So before we adjourn, I would like to bring up a, a quick discussion item. And that is a, to give a verbal approval from the council for the repair of our brick streets. So Director Ring has reached out and asked for us to give a verbal approval for him and the mayor to move forward with the contractor, who is eagerly waiting to move forward on the project, that has been previously discussed repairing a number of our streets. We talked about this as one of the capital projects, oh, was it last week, I believe? So just to go over the list of West Ohio Street, South Fifth Street, South Seventeenth Street, North Tenth Street, North Sixth Street, North Fifth Street, Griffin, River Street, and Euclid Ave. And am I missing any?
All of the south streets.
South Fifth, South Seventeenth. Was there any others that I'm missing, Bob?
No, that was the list we came up with for this round of repairs.
Okay. All right, so we've got, so what we need to do is make a motion to, and I reached out to all of you beforehand, if you're, you know, willing to support this initiative. Any, any discussion on it before a motion is made?
John?
Yes.
Can I just ask the question? With our water and sewer contingency funds, are any of these streets, when we do repair the brick or do overlay on the one, are we replacing any of the water and sewer lines?
No. No, these are mainly just spot repairs.
So it's not a full street?
No, I mean, like Euclid Ave, for example, you know, we're gonna focus on the northerly curb line, you know, where the biggest issues are with, say, drainage or difficulty in plowing, or, you know, just overall ride quality. You know, this isn't gonna be a fix-all, and we're not doing what we did on Third Street, which was incredibly costly. You know, it's, it's spot repair, it patches in the worst areas.
Okay. The only other question, I think it was North Fifth or North Sixth that you were talking about, just, was that the one that we were just gonna pave over?
South Fifth.
South Fifth. Does that need?
Go ahead.
No, I was just curious if we were gonna do the whole street with a pave over, would that be one that we would look at the water and sewer lines before we did it?
You know, we didn't, we didn't really consider that, but the sewer, when we do sewer, we just do linings, that's not invasive, but we didn't consider replacing the water line.
No, I'm just curious, because I've heard from constituents in the past, when we pave a street, and then a couple of weeks later, we come back and dig up a water leak. So I was just, you know, trying to be proactive instead of, you know, having to dig it up after we paved it. Just a question. I just was curious. Thank you.
So I think, you know, I think that's something that we probably should have a conversation about and explore, and so what what Bob, at least, you know, has, it's been described with many of these brick streets. I mean, I know, I'll speak to North Tenth Street along the YMCA. That is one that has probably five big divots, you know, and areas that have been patched again and again, and it presents a number of problems on the street. So I, I don't believe these are gonna, you know, be full overhauls, but it should certainly help the quality, not only the ride quality, but also, as Bob said, plowing and the aesthetics of the neighborhood, too. South Fifth Street, you bring up a good point, though, Lynn. I, I mean, I think that is gonna require some major paving there, and we should take a look at the water line.
John, I just like, it's probably just a typo, but for my word down here is what I requested was not River Street, because that was just recently paved last year. It's East Forest Avenue that runs into River Street. That's the proportion.
Okay, so, all right, we will make, we'll make that.
Okay, I'll be glad to make the motion whenever you're ready.
So the way that I would like to, what I would propose, Dave, is to make a motion to approve an amount not to exceed $100,000 to repair the brick streets, as discussed in the previous capital projects, with the source, funding source to be determined in the following weeks. So as we move forward in the following weeks during the budget process, obviously, we take a look at a lot of different items, right? So the funding source is something that we will determine in the upcoming weeks, but we need to get moving with the contractor. So is that, is that wording sufficient, Tiffany?
Sorry, it sounds good to me, yeah.
Okay. Anybody have a problem with the language of that? All right, you want to make that motion, Dave?
Sure, John.
All right, I'll go ahead and second that motion. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. All right, motion's carried. And I'll make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Alderman Witt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, and we're gonna jump right over to the regular meeting. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the common council for Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021. Will the clerk please call the attendance roll?
Alderman Witt?
Here.
Alderman Panis?
Here.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Here.
Alderman Robinson?
Here.
Alderman Anastasia?
Here.
And Alderman Crawford?
Here. Please bow for the invocation.
Father, as, as we gather here together today, we pray for this day and your purpose for it. Reset our mind, reset our agendas, as we stand in your presence, for you assure us that where two or more gather, in your name you are here. We calibrate our intentions and we focus our hearts. Your will for our lives does not always reflect our plans. Change them to reflect your will. Help us to understand, to understand that we don't need your full clarity to walk in the unique purpose you enlaid in our lives. Bless this meeting today, all those present. As well as the lives of those we will encounter afterward. Ready us for every moment and make every moment count. In your name we pray. Amen.
Lynn, that was nice. I think that would give Reverend Hall a run for his money. All right, so with that. How about I will now lead us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reading, correcting, and approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting.
The regular meeting of the Ole and Common Council was held on Tuesday, March ninth, two thousand twenty-one at seven oh five P M. Present, Alderman Crawford, Alderman Witt, Alderman Panis, Alderman Gonzalez. Alderman Robinson and Alderman Anastasia.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous regular meeting. Could I get a second, please?
Okay.
Second by Alderman Anastasia. All in favor? I opposed. Motion carries. Committee reports an unfinished council business.
We have none.
Communications from the mayor.
Thank you, John. I have two items. The first one is a is a retirement of Captain Edward Jennings. Dear Mayor Elio and Chief Richardson. With mixed feelings, I am hereby submitting my retirement date. My sincere appreciation goes out to the city of Olean for years of employment given to me. And I will forever be grateful for the opportunity to work for the Olean Fire Department. My years here have been rewarding and I am glad to have had the opportunity to sue to serve my community. I have chosen the date of April third, two thousand twenty-one to be my retirement date. Thank you, Edward Jennings, Captain Edward W. Jennings.
Okay, well, thank you to Captain Jennings for all of his years of service.
Yes, he will be missed, so.
You have one more?
Yes, I have, I'm asking. For your support in the appointment of Steve Bernard as Ward Four Alderman. This will be on, it's, I believe it's been given the resolutions number seventeen dash twenty-one. Steve is a longtime resident of Ward Four. Steve is a former Alderman of Ward Four. He has a desire to serve the city in this capacity. And he is only interested in serving out this term and and not not running in November for reelection. So Steve is here in the room with me right now and at the city building one nineteen. If anyone has any questions for Steve. Again, I would appreciate your support in appointing Steve as Ward Four Alderman.
That's a sign.
All right, so thank you, Bill. I will go on to miscellaneous communication.
We have none.
City official reports?
We have none.
Proposed legislation and referrals?
PL ten dash twenty-one by Mayor Elio. Refer to committee of the hall Tuesday, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one by council president. PL eleven dash twenty-one by Mayor Elio. Refer to finance committee by council president. PL twenty-one, PL, I'm sorry, PL twelve dash twenty-one. By Mayor Elio. Refer to committee of the hall Tuesday, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one by council president. PL thirteen dash twenty-one by Mayor Elio. Refer to regular meeting Tuesday, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. For resolution by council president. PL fourteen dash twenty-one by Mayor Elio. Refer to committee of the hall Tuesday, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one by council president. PL fifteen dash twenty-one by Alderman Anastasia. Refer to Public Safety Committee by council president.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. So before we jump into public comment, I I do have a just a brief statement to make. As far as the, you know, appointment of an Alderman is never straightforward. It's never a straightforward process. Unfortunately, it is one that doesn't happen very often here in Olean. Under our city charter, the mayor has the right to appoint anyone he or she wants to appoint, and the council has the right to approve or disapprove. Said appointment is, for that reason, a collaborative process. But it may leave some feeling pleased with the outcome and some maybe others less so. But that is the process that we have to work with. Without compromise between the two bodies, the position might go unfilled, thereby hurting the residents of that ward. Under this process, we challenge the mayor to appoint someone willing to fill out the remainder of the term. To be fairer to all the candidates running for Alderman in Ward Four in November, and he has brought forward Mr. Barnard. Steve has served Ward Four as the mayor said, as an Alderman before, and he's willing to serve out the term with no intentions of running for the office in the future. He is able to provide representation to those who live in Ward Four. And he has the respect of his constituents, the mayor, and many of us on this council. So I ask everyone to please give him a chance and welcome him back to the city council if he's confirmed tonight. So. Before I open up the public comment, I would offer additional opportunity to any of the council members at this time to make a statement. Okay, so what I would ask is by using your ability to display a show of hands. For those who are in attendance tonight, if you would please raise your hand to identify whether or not you would like to speak. Before, so I can get an idea of how many people. We have quite a number of people, so I would like to try to get an idea how many people would like to speak tonight. I'll just give one more minute. So we have four. Is that correct? Only four? Anyone else, please raise your hand if you would like to speak tonight. Okay, five. And it's just for making sure that everyone has their adequate. Adequate enough time. I just want to get it for a scheduling purpose. Okay, so we've got about six. Okay. So with that, will the clerk please read the public comment statement?
The public comment portion of the common council regular meeting is established. To provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views for their concern. Or to provide ample threatening to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, common council members, and city department heads encourage any personal questions to contact them at their offices.
Okay, so I do see we do, it looks like we have seven people that would like to speak. And and just because of the number of people that are willing to speak, I want to make sure everyone gets an opportunity to to be heard. And I apologize, my children just got home, so if it's noisy in the background. I apologize for that. But I I will ask that we keep the public comment to four minutes apiece tonight, please. And when you. Are called on, I believe the mayor has the the control over that. They'll be able, if you leave your hand raised. I ask that if when you log in, you you state your name and address and you will have four minutes. Thank you.
Okay. First one is Daniel Gaten. Go ahead, Daniel.
Well. I'll start out by saying. I'm not sure if this is Daniel or not. I'm just a concerned citizen. And I think that we suspended the rules of needing to state your name and address during a police reform committee when we took comments from people who didn't need to identify themselves. So I live at one, two, three, four, School of Hard Knocks Boulevard in Olean, New York. I want to comment a little bit on the on the police reform committee. And the fact that they took comments, emails from people who were allowed to remain anonymous. Didn't need to state where they were from, where where they lived. And that's unfair to everybody else who has to come out here and state their name, address, and everything else. These people need. Are are allowed to state their views and not even know know who they are. The same with business owners. The mayor said they talked to a bunch of business owners who stated their. Views on this. I had the opportunity to speak to some business owners as well, so that they were never approached. So this leads me to believe that we approached the people that we thought would give us the comments and views that we wanted to hear. Instead of approaching a wide variety of people. That's unfair to the committee that worked so hard on this. And people could go and be able to state their views without having to go through the same process as everybody else. It's unfair to everybody who had to go through that process. I think all them emails and all them comments would be taken out of the record. Also, we allow in that committee, somebody who didn't, doesn't live in Olean, who doesn't even pay taxes in Olean. It just seems to happen that person who has publicly came out and stated that. He does not like certain minority groups to have a say in that committee. Which is very, very disrespectful to the groups that he has publicly come out and and then. And then totally against. And for us to allow that to happen in our city is no is no better than.
Hey, Dan, your mic is getting like crazy feedback right now. All I hear is like a high pitched whistling. Can you maybe? Like or something?
Because is that better? I think somebody's not muted on your end.
That's a that's a little better, Dan. You are coming in a little choppy.
All right, well, I I just think.
That's a lot better.
Bill, please mute mute Fred Saridan's microphone and maybe that's the problem.
Yeah, somebody on your end is not muted. But I I I think for them guys to allow. The person who doesn't pay taxes, doesn't live in the city's comments to be in the record, who has openly stated. That they are in favor of disenfranchising some some groups in the public. Is is very disrespectful to the committee that worked hard to come up with this plan. I think that everybody who didn't identify themselves and also anybody who didn't live in Olean. Their their views should be stricken from the record and not even considered. That's disrespectful to the people like that had to come out and state their names, state their address, and put themselves on public display. That's unfair. And and John, you said something about fairness. That's unfair to everybody. I want to also address the issue of the parks too. One thing I noticed during the budget process. Is that all the a lot of parks got a lot of attention for a lot of money. Except for one of the parks in Olean that Mr. Gonzalez stood up for this, one of the highly used parks in Olean is Franchia. Received no additional funding. There's no parking down there. The basketball courts need to be redone. There's the playground equipment that I played on as kids. And all the rest of these parks are receiving millions and millions of dollars of funding. And listen, there's that can only lead you to believe one thing. That the minor, a lot of minorities and poor kids play in that park. So, you know, why are we not putting money in? So that that's kind of where I am on that particular situation. Thank you, Paul Gonzalez, for bringing that up. As far as the appointment of the legis of the of the mayor, I I gotta tell you. You know, the mayor had set out a clear clear standards and clear dates for everybody to apply who wanted to be considered. There were certain people that were that that went by them dates that put their applications in, that took care of the business. That in in the timeframes that the mayor wanted them taken care of. And because he couldn't get somebody who was in his party, who wanted to do what he wanted them to do, he he extended them deadlines. He dragged this thing out and and until he could secure somebody. That and I don't even know this guy. He could be one of the greatest guys on earth, but the fact of the matter is.
And you've got about thirty seconds.
All right, but the fact of the matter is, there was deadlines that were clearly that he put out by himself and he didn't even stick to the deadlines. So why even put them out? And you know, John, you talked about fairness. None of this sounds fair to me. None of it. Not not one single thing sounds fair to me. So that's all I gotta say. And and I and I kind of hope you guys do the right thing because none of this, none of this smells right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gaten.
Mayor, you're muted.
Go ahead with your comments, Leo.
All right, I would just like to say that after having been following this entire police reform reform situation from the very beginning and having. Been getting more involved with our our city government and our city processes. I'm incredibly disappointed in your direct handling of this replacement for alderperson for Ward Four. We had early candidates that were qualified, passionate, and made their intentions known from the very beginning of this process. And you continually sought out people who would serve your agenda. Because you wanted someone who looked like you, who aligned with the party that you aligned with, and it's very obvious. And it's disappointing to me as a citizen that we had someone in place who was already involved in local city government and had been present and active. Since everything that had been happening this summer, we had a person who wasn't going to run in November. They volunteered themselves for this role, but but you looked at the letter after their party registration and you said, nope. It's incredibly disappointing, in my opinion, and it's incredibly disheartening that after time after time after time. Of myself standing up and making public comment of people in my demographic standing up and making public comment. And of people across the broad spectrum of Olean standing up and making public comment. You continue to hide in your office, clothe yourself away and say, well, I need to talk to some more people. What you're saying, what we'll make it clear, what you're saying is you need to talk to more people who belong to your party. And it's disappointing and it's not at all democracy. It's not at all democracy and it's not at all for the progress of Olean. And the reason that I chose not to run for an elected position is because someone needs to call you out personally and publicly. Because right now, I believe firmly in attacking problems and not attacking people, but the two are converging right now. Because you are continually opposed to the progress of Olean. If you were ready for progress in Olean, you would have very quickly accepted the person who had no skin in the election in November. Was already active on the committee and was up to speed and you would have appointed them for alderperson. But you needed someone who would say yes, no matter what you put on the docket, and that to me is very obvious. It's been evident with the speed in which you have moved forward with the police reform committee, which is about the speed that could be measured by a sundial. The city of Cuba, New York outpaced us and met it with more positive and affirmative action. And this ship is being steered by you, but right now it's not being steered. You've got the brakes on and you're waiting for more people to come along who are going to say yes and who are going to affirm the decisions that you make from here on out, and that's not progress. We had women, we had LGBTQ people, we had black people, all of them with education saying, we want to help Olean. And you said, nope, let me find another cisgendered, straight, white, male Republican. It's disheartening and frankly, it's obvious. It's obvious at this point. Thank you, everybody, for your time. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Leo.
Okay, we have. We have Mickey. Mickey, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, very good. I just wanted to start by thanking you, Mr. Mayor, as well as Alderman Robinson and Michiko. For all your work in moderating the police reform committee. It was a pretty big committee, but to see so many great people coming together for an important topic was kind of a thing of beauty. Beauty not without its flaws, of course. Four or five times procedures were denied in discussion, but policies were shared openly. Although I tried bringing statistics and modern solutions to the discussions, they were mostly dismissed. And many times on the police reform committees, many items on the committee's list of recommendations were made. Instead by emotion and learned experience. The committee never made a recommendation to have more than one SRO, nor to find funding to do so. The idea that having police in school settings improves the relationship between police and community is a myth. Follow the statistics. They don't lie. They're not biased. On the job experience by the SRO, who is? They don't lie. They're not biased. On-the-job experience by the SRO, who is an exceptional individual we are blessed to have working for the city, and who sat on the committee, is all the committee wanted to acknowledge. Uh, same thing when discussing the importance of the social workers. Only on-the-job experience and emotion helped determine the resulting recommendation. Uh, this is not the best Olian can do. There has to be a higher standard with more reasoning and statistic-based approaches. Uh, but it's not the worst either. For our first time, it's not half-bad. I'd like to see more, and I'd like to see better. But what I think is most important here is to see the engagement happening on this topic. To acknowledge the emotions that were raised, the sheer size of the committee and attracting all the right attention speaks for itself. It's all a move in the right direction for the community, and I thank you all for your consideration and patience during the growing process. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Mickey.
Okay, we have, uh, Dr. Gary Harvey. Go ahead, Dr. Harvey.
Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Hope you're all having a good evening. Um, my address, uh, 408 East State Street, uh, floor two, here in Olian, New York. Uh, just so there's no question, definitely been a resident for more than a year. Um, with that being said, uh, the first thing that I wanted to bring up was the, uh, in reference to Police Reform Committee, definitely appreciate the, uh, the work that's gone into it. Uh, like Mickey just said, it's a starting ground, it's a launching point. Um, definitely have a long way to go. In reference to the anonymous emails, uh, that were considered and accepted, in reference to those opinions, I do think that was unfair. Um, I do think that that can be approached as a bias approach, uh, very much so, uh, especially when individuals are required, um, in public comment to provide name and address, to, um, even in some fashion, attempt to validate, uh, their residency when making con, uh, even though over an audio recording, it's still not validated. I can pretty much tell you I'm from wherever. Uh, but still, it's more of a level of accountability than this is just what I've got, and, um, you know, what people are telling me. Uh, because I, I could give you a list of what people are telling me, and those people can remain unidentified, and those people can just simply be my opinion, which seems to be the case, uh, oftentimes, and it's unfortunate. Um, my other concern would be in reference to the budget discussions over the course of the last few weeks. And when, um, Councilman, uh, Alderman Robinson pointed out a discrepancy of, uh, a hundred thousand plus dollars in a line item, the response, uh, from Mr. Saridan was, I just work with the information that I'm given. Uh, that does not provide, uh, or induce a lot of confidence in the, uh, the staff and in the individuals we have dealing with the dollars and making the decisions. Um, that level of unintentional transparency, I guess we'll say, uh, definitely hurt, uh, confidence levels. I just wanted to point that out. Um, I appreciate the work and that the council is attempting to do in the areas that they're trying to attract. Um, I just hope that, uh, we're crossing Ts and dotting Is, uh, because the lack of tr- transparency and inadvertent accidental transparency definitely raises concerns. Uh, the other thing that, uh, I would like to point out in reference to the appointment of the Alderman for Ward Four, the concern for me was initially the length of time. Uh, the last two times the Alderman had resigned, inside of two weeks, there was an appointment made and an individual filled the slot. Uh, like a previous individual had mentioned, um, I believe it was five individuals, uh, submitted their interest, uh, expressed interest, interviewed, uh, for the position. I believe one of those individuals, uh, had no intention of running in November, uh, but did not fit the political climate that was desired, so they weren't even, they weren't the consideration. So we waited, we waited until budget discussions were completed to decide to give Ward Four representation. In, in my opinion, that was, that was just political games. And, and it was unfair. We had an entire budget discussion without a ward having any type of representation. I, I feel that that was just in poor taste and poor leadership. All I have to say this evening. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Dr. Harvey. Next, uh, we have Ezra Johnson.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right. All right, first of all, I would just, I would want to start off by saying thank, I want to thank Mayor Alio for wasting my time and the other four people's time that interviewed for that position. Um, it was, it was told to us that it would be handled just like the, the appointment for Ward Six, and obviously that was untrue. Um, if we were really gonna go by the books here and do what we said we were gonna do instead of lying and just playing party line, we would, we would, uh, pick the choice that was not running for the candidate. But my problem isn't with that. My problem is that Ward Four does need representation. You guys do need to make a decision and do have to, you guys gotta do what you have to do. So I definitely understand. My whole point of getting on this meeting today was to talk about the Police Reform Meeting, um, the collaborative, and I want to, again, show my support for the, the Civilian Review Board. And I want to talk about the transparency of the emails, how we were allowed to just throw emails in there and let people say whatever they wanted to, and hide behind their name, hide behind the names, um, Concerned Citizen. I feel like that was messed up, when I could just be like, I'm putting my name out there, I'm saying what I have to say, and I'm more liable to get repercussion than someone hiding behind an email. So I feel like that whole process was rigged. I feel like it was set up to just fit what you really wanted on Mayor Alio. I know you expressed that you said you wanted a civilian review board, but if you really truly wanted it, you wanted to have people signing emails Concerned Citizens and letting them know how to sign it and where to send it to. Because I believe in one of the meetings you guys talked about, you said that you would CC in, I believe, Alderman Robinson, so he would be able to see them as well as they were coming in, but that wasn't the case at all. You just fit what you wanted to do. It's just the party lines bullcrap that the city Olian doesn't need right now. And that's all I got to say.
Okay. All right, uh, next, Ms. Swire.
Go ahead, uh.
Can you, uh, all hear me?
Yep, yes, we can.
Yes.
Uh, Victoria Swire, 326 South Union Street, here in Olian. Um, a lot of what I wanted to say has already been said. But I am also going to call out those emails, which, without even hearing what anybody else's opinion was on them, I recognized immediately something was a little shady. I recognized my name, because I put my name and I put my information, everything was on there, because I'm not afraid of my opinions, as you might have guessed. But for some reason, the people that were opposed to literally a civilian review board, one that is made up and made of other citizens, somehow found a way to be afraid of retaliation, and they were not instructed that they had to put any sort of recognition on there for who was saying what. And reading all of those emails, it just seemed like everybody was saying the exact same thing. I'm not gonna stay what Ezra just said, but he took the words out of my mouth at the same time. And there is a growing frustration in this community of young people trying to fight against old people. And I'm sorry, I, I know this will probably come off as offensive to a lot of people on this council, but what are you guys doing? Why are you asking us for our opinions and for us to get involved? And then every time we try to, you don't want us. Why would you even ask that other people try to be involved and try to, you know, put their, um, candidacy in for Alderman, if you knew who you were gonna pick? If you knew exactly who you wanted? Stop pretending like, you know, you're interested in, in what we're trying to bring to the table, when you are so opposed to progress in this town, that, again, like Leo said, there's no way to hide it anymore. Either you want our help or you don't, but you can't be surprised when all of my generation, and I am a millennial, moves out of Olian and doesn't come back. What is there for us to come back to? I'm so glad and grateful that the ci, that the, you know, Police Review Board has done everything that they have, but it was like pulling teeth to get there. And that right there is a prime example of progress. Spending the weekend in Buffalo and being around Elmwood and seeing just how vibrant and how many people are out, that is like walkable Olian. I realize there's a pandemic going on, but I also realize there's no place for people my age to go. There's nothing for us to do. There's talk about bringing a roundabout to, uh, you know, my corner, because apparently somehow that's gonna bring people to South Olian. I walk past empty house after empty house, littered with newspaper, clearly nobody's living there, but somebody still manages to throw a Penny Saver there every time. There's garbage littering the streets. This information about not giving Franchot money, I'm not shocked. Franchot's always been the place where you don't want to send your kids to go. But at what point are you guys going to admit that maybe we have something to offer and let us help you and work together, instead of pretending like you're listening to us, but at the same time turning around and doing things your own way? I, I just, I, we're trying to work with you guys, and we're really getting fed up, because it's like, nobody wants to work back with us. So, except for a small, select few of you, which I happen to be very grateful for. But I could really use the mayor on our side every once in a while, and it doesn't seem like we're getting anywhere with him. So, thank you all. I hope you have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Kevin Doherty.
We have Joe Citizen.
Uh, Kevin Doherty, 615 West Sullivan Street. If, uh, you guys want to continue the hate mail from all the other people in the room, um, P.O. Box 148, here in Olian. Um, uh, is previously being on the common council, um, who's received numerous hate mails and threats over the years. I could see why ill, um, ill, maybe constituents or residents of the city with, uh, less fortitude than myself would not want to put their, um, not want to put their names forward. So just to address that topic real quick, I, uh, if, it's funny how that is a big deal, but, uh, anytime I've ever said anything vocally out that did not deal with, uh, with as a dissenting opinion to anybody else, uh, nobody had a problem using emails and letters written to the city or to the paper against me that did not have an address, or just said Concerned Citizen. So I'd like to point that out. Um, it's funny how the, the tables turn and the same tricks don't work, or if, if they're even tricks, I don't think they are tricks. Um, it's just one of those, it's one of those things. Um, on the other side of, uh, for another topic, uh, I did want to congratulate the, uh, the mayor. I support, uh, I support our cisgender mayor in all of his, uh, you know, in all the things that he does for our, our city. And, uh, even though I, me and Steve had our, had, had our run and our, our bat at the election polls, uh, my first term, uh, there were no hard feelings, and Steve did represent the ward very well. I, I heard from a lot of constituents, and I support the, uh, I support you guys nominating Steve Barnard tonight, I hope. And, uh, and he was good for the ward then, and he'll be great to fulfill my term. And, uh, I, you know, I appreciate you guys taking your due diligence and, you know, and, and, and waiting as long as you did, because representation is great, but if, if you don't pick the right candidate, and, and I trust you guys to make the decisions that you make. So that's, I mean, that's how the process works. So I'd like to, you know, say my congratulations to the common council and the mayor and the city as a whole, and, uh, I think you guys should know what you do. And, uh, you know, I, I know my comments are gonna go on deaf ears to the other residents in the room right now, but, uh, I hope you guys know that, uh, me, and I hope I represent the silent majority, and that, uh, our, our thoughts and concerns don't fall on deaf ears. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Doherty.
Okay, we have a, Ms. McCormick? Yes, thank you.
Hi, um, my name is Dr. Laura McCormick. I live on Prospect Avenue. Um, I don't have a lot to say, because I'm pretty new here. Uh, my husband and I moved here in December. Um, but I, I do have concerns about the appointment, uh, of the, the Alderman. Uh, just because I, you know, I've been following as best I can, and I personally know one of the people who had stepped up for the position, and I don't understand why this person was, it seems, uh, not to be given serious consideration. And this may be an, an assumption on my part, but the impression that I'm left with is, um, this person may have been turned away because they are not cis white gender male. Um, and I just really do hope to see more representation, um, in the, you know, for the LGBTQ community, as well as people of color. Um, and this is coming from me, a cisgender white female, middle-aged female. So the lack of diversity does concern me, and, um, it's something I'm going to be watching and involved in. Um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, seeing, wow, Mr. Malone. Right, um, so, Mr. Malone.
Go ahead, Mr. Malone.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, listening to the, but, well, first let me just say thank you to the committee, uh, the Police Reform Committee, uh, the civilians on there. I appreciate you listening. I appreciate you putting your time to the side and being part of trying to make change. And, uh, that said, I would like to say, you know, listening to the budget discussion over the last few weeks has really pointed out the need for a CPA. As a council person would ask a question about a line item, not speaking for them, but keep in mind, they are supposed to speak for me. So therefore, one of the last things that we want to hear is that I'm just using the numbers that were giving to me, coming from the person who is supposed to be managing the city funds. I know some of us in the city are not used to accountability. We are dealing with millions of dollars, and no one with the right intentions would be against a CPA in that position. Second, I would like to address the issue of Alder, of the Ward Four Alderman, or lack thereof. I understand that I do not live in this ward. I also understand that Alder, Alder persons do more than just represent their ward. Who knows what the person who should have been representing Ward Four could have brought to the budget discussion? So yes, I would like to know what is going on with the appointment. The people were told an amount of time they could be put in for this appointment if they were interested, and they did. Five people, which one, one of which said they would only do it if, to represent Ward Four until the election, which has an, which was an honorable act, and also gave the mayor and the city council a way to be fair and quick as they usually are with this process. I know it's been said tonight that this doesn't happen a lot here, but actually, it does. I mean, it happens so much here, you would think that some people or parties use it for a political strategy. Now, a, now after most, after almost two months, the people learn, once again, you're not going to do what you say and pick somebody from the list of applicants. The mayor is just going to pick one of his buddies to pla, replace this appointment. The appointment, the person that is in Ward Four has, the people have been in Ward Four have already voted this person out, from my understanding. And if that is the case, then what right would it give the mayor or the council to posit, push, push this person back into representing Ward Four? People talk about draining the swap in DC. Let's do it at home first, and then it can spread to DC. The right thing to do is to appoint the gentleman, Pab Sir Genius, or however you would like to say that, his na, however you say his name, who has stated he was not going to run in November and stepped forward to do so without being begged or forced, or a person whom the ward hasn't already voted out. If you lose an election, then, then why, I don't understand how the mayor would feel that he should put this person back into it. The people need a government that works for them and with them. As you have experienced over the last year, we're no longer accepting the status quo. We're not going away. We are not going to, we are going to be right here to see through the change that we're demanding happens. No excuses, no hoops, threats, or anything else is going to deter us. No excuses, no hoops, threats, or anything else is going to deter us. If you wanted the best for the community, you would see us, you would understand, you would listen. Then you would help remove obstacles, not give excuses or try to slow progress. Everyone says that they want change. The thing is, change is a verb, which means action has to take place. So no more lip service. Let's put actions to our words and move our city forward. Tonight, I have sat here and I heard people say all these different things about how our community should be, how you, the council and the mayor should be listening to our community. I fully agree with them. I also heard you guys say that you would look over the proposal, the, uh, proposals that we suggested as the police committee. I would ask you, I understand that you guys want to look over it and make a good decision. But I would also ask you to move quickly on this. I know you guys say that government moves slow, and it does when you want it to. And when you want it to move quick, it moves quick, just like tonight. You voted. You, you, you learned something tonight about the buses? You voted on it. That simple. You guys do this every week. I've been watching the videos and being part of this for over a year. And I've seen plenty of times where you guys vote on things that you're just getting the information the day before or that day. So if you're going to make reactions on that, I would ask you to move quickly on this. I would also like to, to go with, uh, Mr. Gayton on, and the rest of the civilians that have spoke tonight about the, uh, discussion on the Franchot Park. I don't understand why all this money can go to these parks and nothing's gonna happen with Franchot, and we, the people, aren't going to accept that. And you guys really need to learn that, like, the, the lady said earlier today, there is a growing group of people who are being engaged in your city. If you're not willing to work with them, your best bet is to go find another hobby, because we're not going to let you sit there no more. You're not running for free no more. There's always going to be somebody running against somebody, so do for the people. That's all we're asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Angela Sands.
Hi, um, I'm sorry. I talked to Mr. Alio a couple weeks ago. Um, I'm don't like how everybody's bashing everybody on here. I called him about a couple of concerns I had. And he actually is for this city. And I don't care what anybody says, because when I called him, I had some concerns, he addressed it. Do you remember who I am, Mr. Alio?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So when I called him, I, I ended up getting very emotional. And he listened to me, and he expressed his concerns and he apologized for everything. Um, I ended up telling him some personal information, and he even put my family in his prayers. So I, I understand that there is a bunch of other things going on in this city. I'm not familiar with a bunch of other things, but I do see where everybody else's point is, but I do feel I've talked to Alderman, uh, Robinson, and that's when I contacted, um, Mr. Alio, and I did have a personal conversation with him. And I, both of them, actually. And I feel that Mr. Alio does address the things that he needs to address. Other people may not under, may not feel that way, but Mr. Alio is trying to do what he is needing to do. So, and I don't understand why people don't feel that way. I think that Mr. Alio is doing what he needs to do for his, his city and for our, the citizens. He's trying to do it. He doesn't it's, there's so much going on, only, you guys can only do so much. It's a, you know, everything's limited with everything that's going on. So I, I had, I wasn't gonna speak because I was just gonna sit here and be quiet and listen to everybody. But there's, there's so much going on, and, I mean, there, I don't know. I just needed to let people know that you are doing what you need to do, Mr. Alio.
Hey, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? And I will call public comment closed. Onto financing bills.
The auditor has processed bills and claims against the city of Olean as per list submitted to each alderman in a welcome experiment thereof. Whereas, the auditor has presented to the common council bills and claims against the city of Olean totaling six hundred ninety-eight thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-eight cents for the budget in a welcome experiment thereof. Now, therefore, be resolved that the same being or hereby audited and allowed, and the auditor is hereby authorized and directed to draw warrants for the payment thereof at the amount set opposite each prospective claim. We are going to sponsor for that.
All right, are there any comments or questions on financing bills? Seeing none, I'll make a motion. Could I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Alderman Witt. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
You're muted, Jason.
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
At this time, I would like to, uh, make a motion to suspend the rules. Could I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Alderman Witt. All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed. At this time, I will make a motion to amend the agenda to include Resolution seventeen dash twenty-one. Could I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Alderman Anastasia. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Please continue.
Resolution thirteen dash twenty-one, P L ten dash twenty-one by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Gonzalez, to authorize the mayor to sign agreements between the city of Olean and the state of New York in connection with consolidated section fifty-three eleven program funds. Omnibus program fund and accelerated transit capital program funds for the purchase of three light-kay buses for the Olean area transit system. And to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Matthews Bus Alliance D B A, Matthews Bus Commercial for the purchase of three light-kay buses.
Okay, this was discussed in committee of the whole. Are there any final, last minute comments or questions? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Resolution fourteen dash twenty-one, P L twelve dash twenty-one by Alderman Gonzalez, seconded by Alderman Robinson, to adapt and implement, and implement the city of Olean policy reform and reinvention collaborative plan.
Um, again, we received a presentation from the mayor, uh, with his comments on this. Um, any final comments or questions? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Resolution fifteen dash twenty-one, P L thirteen dash twenty-one to authorize the implementation and funding in the first instance one hundred percent of the federal aid and state multi-cillary program aid eligible cost of the constru- um, construction and construction inspection phases of the Olean pedestrian crossing enhancement project. A transportation federal aid project and appropriate funds, therefore. We also gonna sponsor for that.
All right, so this, uh, came before us during committees. Um, are there any comments or questions on this? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Alderman Witt. Could I get a second, please? I'll make a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Resolution sixteen dash twenty-one, P L fourteen dash twenty-one by Alderman Crawford, seconded by Alderman Witt. Resolution establishing the standard work base pursuant to New York State and local retirement system regulation three fifteen point four.
All right, covered in committee of the whole. Any comments or questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Resolution seventeen dash twenty-one, P L none. Resolution confirming the mayor appointment of Steve Bernard as Ward Four Alderman.
Okay, um, again, we've been, uh, updated on this. And, uh, any last questions or comments for, uh, Steve, who's been sitting, sitting in the room, uh, patiently waiting if there were any questions or anything? Any questions?
Can I say something?
Sure, Linda.
Um, you know, in the past, um, I also had to appoint a couple aldermans through my term as mayor, and it's never easy, but ultimately, it is the mayor's choice. And I think, um, you know, we were against the last one because that person was running and this person's not. I also have known, uh, Mr. Bernard for many, many years, and he, um, is just a wonderful person and he'll do his best, and I look forward to working with him.
Thank you, Alderman Witt. Alderman Gonzalez?
Yep, John, um, I just wanted to say, um, I respect Steve a lot. Uh, him and, I consider him, uh, and his wife friends. Um, I think he did a good job when he was on the council a few years ago. Um, I will support his candidacy for this position, but that being said, uh, i- if it were my decision, I think we should leave this seat open until November. And let the voters choose, and then we appoint the, the winner of the, the election on November seventh, or whatever the day is, whatever, whenever the election is won. Um, that being said, uh, maybe a happy medium, and, and I don't want to put, uh, you know, alderman, uh, or, sorry, not alderman, but, um, put Mr. Bernard on the spot, but, uh, one thing to consider, I think, would be is, when, when the winner is, uh, you know, declared in the election, maybe he considers stepping down and we appointing that winner.
Okay. Is that, is that a comment or a question, Paul? I just wanted to.
That is, I don't expect any answer on that.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you, Alderman Gonzalez. Anyone else? Okay, and, uh, you know, I, I, I think that's, uh, that's definitely an interesting perspective, Paul, and, and thank you for sharing that. Okay. Seeing no other comments or questions, uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. That's all we have.
Okay, congratulations, uh, Alderman Bernard. Thank you, uh, thank you for stepping, stepping up. I gave Steve a call earlier today, and, you know, um, he, he's willing to step up and, and represent, and, and that's the balance that, that is necessary in this process. Uh, as easy as it is to say, let the people decide. Effectively, that is what is happening. Um, you know, the candidates who came forward and, and we, I truly appreciated meeting with many of those candidates, but, uh, the collaboration, collaboratively speaking, collectively, it, there, there were many who were, uh, befacing each other and, uh, in November, and it would be unfair to give one a head start over another. Um, it's, it's a series of months away, and uh, so yeah, it was the, the recommendation to find someone who was willing to, who, to serve out the term, um, who is experienced, and uh, and so, uh, again, I, I thank Steve for his, uh, stepping forward, and I look forward to working with him on the council. All right, anything, uh, before we adjourn?
John, could I just clarify something? Um, during the public comment, I think it was Mr. Gayton, made a comment about the Franchot Park. And I do recall between, um, two thousand ten and two thousand thirteen, we did replace all of the playground equipment over there, and I do believe it costs between sixty and seventy thousand dollars. So, um, Franchot has not been neglected. I do agree that we need to do something with the parking lot and the road go, goes down into Franchot, but I just wanted to clear up that, that miss, um, you know, misconception about the playground, playground equipment.
Okay.
Yeah, that was two thousand thirteen, Linda.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Uh, anything else? Bill?
Nope.
Good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Could I get a second, please?
Second.
My Alderman Anastasia, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Bye, guys.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.